All right, this is the meeting of Forest Hills Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There's a time for public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 7. If you would like to speak during public comments, please feel free to fill out a comment card. They will be picked up after the superintendent search portion of the agenda. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent group thing?
Madam President, I would like to motion to amend the agenda to add a discussion regarding the process of the subcommittee in the interim, superintendent interim superintendent search after item number five.
That will be able to be covered in item number five, superintendent search.
It is.
Yes, superintendent search is just a general, anything we need to talk about regarding the superintendent search.
Thank you.
So do I have approval for approving or a motion to approve the consent group thing?
So.
Second.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Discussion.
Actually. Is there anything that wants to call for special consideration first?
Yes.
I'd like to pull out item number one for the approval of minutes.
Okay. Oh, speaking of which, I'll pass these out so everybody has the minutes. So you would like to vote on the minutes separately?
Yes, I would just like to call out an item on this that I would like to see if we can add to the minutes already on that.
Okay. Because these are closed session minutes, so we're not able to discuss the closed session minutes in an open meeting.
Are they for the regular session minutes or the closed session minutes?
For the regular session.
Regular session.
Oh, regular session, yeah, okay, got it, okay. All right, anything else for special consideration? Anything you would like to call our attention to?
Just simply in the consent grouping that we are very pleased to be recommending new administrative staff member, Lisa Rodell, who will be our principal at Net Forest Elementary. We're very excited about that, and Lisa comes to us with great experience, and we welcome her to Forest Hills. Also, we have ratification of contracts from our childcare and preschool group, our administrator group, our supervisors group, and our administrative support group that we are bringing here today for the board's approvals. Well, I want to extend my appreciation to all the people involved in negotiating these successor agreements and the time that they've put in during a busy time of year, so we're pleased to bring those here today. And we hope to have more that will be brought into action. That's it.
Any further discussion?
Can I just ask, I thought we were going to be ratifying the instructional staff today. What is, is there a whole lot that we have? There's a lot.
Yeah, they haven't ratified their agreement at this point in time, so we don't have a ratification vote when they have ratified it.
No, I understand that, I just, this is, like, this feels like it's going on longer than you were told it was going to go on.
Right.
So I'm just curious if there are some issues, we have a committee waiting for our calendar, people aren't planning, we don't have graduation days, we have none of that stuff.
Yep. So, we, with collective bargaining, we talked about this a little bit at our last meeting, we cannot, we can't dictate certain things in that regard, and I think their general membership has a variety of opinions and viewpoints on some issues, so it's not as though they're all aligned on their issues or goals that they have, they're kind of spread across the board, and that sort of varies from issue to issue on different things. So I think it's taken a little bit more time on their side. I think their bargaining team thought they had a good agreement and something that they felt their general membership would prove. And as we know, the general membership is not the same as all the teachers as well, because there's many teachers who are not members of the Forest Hills Education Association. So I think they're looking to do a survey again to find out where they could concede, where they want to have common ground, or if there's some issue in the tentative agreement that is sticking out more than some other issue on that. But I don't think the calendar is, and so that's something that we would look to see, is that something we could come to a separate agreement on so we can reduce that and get that opportunity?
That would be good.
Can I ask a question to unemployment? We're announcing a new principal break. I'm curious, what are we approving then today that she's already been hired? I'm just kidding, you know, I knew this, so I'm kind of curious how the process is, because it's already been announced, pictures gotten out there, it's in the news, so I'd just be curious, what are we approving then today? You know, if they said no, what would happen, right?
Right, well.
So I'm just curious to see, like, how that process works, because I know we're not a part of the hiring process on that.
Right, so.
But we're still approving some.
Right, so we're recommending her employment to the Board of Education. So she hasn't officially started working.
Gotcha.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And other questions or comments regarding the consent group thing? All right, then can I please have a roll call votes for item three B one through five?
Yes, Dr. Rocha?
Yes.
Ms. Sarmire?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mrs. Ma?
Yes.
Mrs. Ryan, yes, Dr. Bosson?
Yes.
Okay, and then you want to go pull out Mr. Bor, the minutes. Yes, I think what I'd like to see is added, the reason that I voted no is not in here. I mean, everybody, I know you're shaking your head, that doesn't go in there?
No, typically, just the results of the vote.
But when we have other discussions on here, they're generally, if somebody mentions something, or somebody brings something up, it's put in the minutes.
Very discussion.
I would just say, for discussion followed. The minutes are not verbatim, and they're not required to be.
The interim contract, is that the part that you?
Well, yeah, but I would just like it to reflect the reason why I voted no versus, like, the concerns that I had, you know, and with the negotiation, I thought we were going to negotiations, that we would be actually going back and forth, you know, on that, but we probably haven't, what my concerns were reflecting in the minutes. Yeah, I think we're bound that it's typically, all of the details of the discussions aren't all reflected in the minutes, the minutes would be, I'm moving pages along, and Belle can only take so much, so it just, it reflects sort of, you know, high level and actions that are before it's taken. Okay, anything else with regard to the minutes? Okay, can we do a separate vote then?
We have a motion.
Oh.
Sorry, because it was on the third person.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes and consent group on three day one.
Okay.
Okay.
Can I roll them up? Yes, Dr. Rocha?
Yes.
Ms. Sarmire?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
No.
Mrs. Ma?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott, yes, Dr. Bosson?
Yes.
Okay, I know we had a few people come in late, if there's anybody that wants to make public comment, please feel free to fill out the public comment card over there. They will be picked up after the superintendent search portion of the meeting. Superintendent's report.
We're just working on a variety of things that are typical at this point at the late stages of June, and I'm working on some things I typically don't work on, which is cleaning out all sorts of items from my office and being prepared to wrap things up. So it's a busy time, but I'll just keep it brief for my last superintendent's report and that'll be it.
All right, well, thank you very much. We are now moving on to superintendent search. Mary, would you like to kick off that?
So, a couple of us acknowledged after our last meeting that it seemed like we were rushing the process trying to hire a superintendent by January 1st. So I just reached out to Dave Phillips, is our expert, and say, do we get Mary here? He said, well, I can see that you have some concerns, a big one is we're trying to pass a sizable bond issue in November, and it's supposed to take us through 2031. We're also looking a lot of activity during the holidays, and Dave said, these are things I had not known about or considered, so it warrants additional discussion, yes. So I asked him to sit down with our search committee yesterday, and we did a quick Zoom, and said we'd refer it out to the group, and what he came back to us and said was, did not realize about the bond issue, as somebody who's been a superintendent who's served in three interim capacities, you do not need to mix these two. It also might make your community frustrated, because we're trying to concentrate on one important thing for the district at the same time as another important thing for the district. So he strongly encouraged us to consider an alternate calendar, which I was supposed to bring out, I did not, I will email to you later, that sets us up for the end of the year. The superintendent would be hired by spring break, which I think his alchemists would agree, that's helpful, because all your fun kicks in that either spring break is done, I'm sorry, I didn't bring it with. And he said, the other thing, it was kind of a neat quote, he said, you know, the other thing that we don't always take into consideration is you have a very capable interim superintendent coming in. He said, fortunately, you had several people to look at, that is not always the case. So between the bond issue and the way you have a capable person that might be able to pick up where Dan left off and keep our ship afloat, he strongly encourages us to consider, you know, a hire by July 1st. He would, that would involve some community forums in December, you know, before the holidays, but after the election, every Thanksgiving, and then be able to post that position first of the year and start with the interview process and whatnot to get us set up by the end of March, middle of March, hopefully. Thoughts, questions, concerns?
To tag on that, because I was one of those that had that question, and my mind was like, boy, that seems like an awful lot to be throwing all together, all in the fall, you know, and I know that, you know, there might be concerns that it looks like we're, you know, delaying the hiring of a superintendent, and that's the primary job of a board, is to hire the superintendent. But I don't look at it that way, because we have hired a superintendent, an interim superintendent, who we feel very comfortable with, who we think is going to be able to do some really great things for our district, and it allows us to get her into place, she's worked on bond issues before, so she'll be able to help us shepherd through the bond issue, and it allows us to focus on that, and at the same time, so we have a superintendent that we're putting in place, we'll be able to do the bond, and just as the bond issue is wrapping up, we're then going to turn our focus to looking to the long-term superintendent, so it just sort of, they all sort of streamline and they piggyback on each other and they mesh together without doing more like this rather than like this.
How much work does the bond take for us, though, that would be involved in the superintendent process? I guess I wasn't aware that it was going to take a lot.
We tend to do a lot of communications and marketing, I don't know if you remember, but the last one was Invest, Inspire, Secure, and we had a full campaign and went out and stalked people and had things on the website, and I think we might have had a mailing, I'm looking to see if Elizabeth is here, but, you know, the community needs to know what they're going out and voting on, so we've always, I think, which is why we've always been successful with our bond issues, this is what we're all about, and, you know, please let us know if there are any questions. So there is significant effort, you know, dedicated to that when we are helping bond issue election, sorry.
But that's us, we're going out to the community and doing that stuff, it's not anything that we're.
Yeah, it's less of a physical human workload and just more of an information effort giving to the whole community, and then we're going to ask that whole community to also consider all the superintendent stuff and come to the focus groups and fill out the survey online and do all of that work. Originally, that was slated at basically the same time, early November, so that's what Dave thought, that would be a lot to push on everyone in the community at the same time, essentially.
Right, yeah, there's, the amount of information being taken in by the community on two different fronts, but also the work that the administrative staff has to do, to do both of those, and it's a lot of work on their part to do just one or just the other, and try to do both of them at the same time.
I mean, I think our community is smart enough that they can handle both of those things at the same time. I am not, I don't love the idea of delaying it. I am fully, I fully understand that we might not be able to find someone that we think is the best fit for us by January 1st, which is why we always talk about a flexible timeline, so that if January 1st is coming and we're not, we're not near where we need to be, then we do push that to July. I do not love the idea of just, like, hired staff, we are bringing this off officially for, for the summer. I guess I could, we could talk about some other things that we could still be doing in the fall for the superintendent search, I really disagree with the idea of just not doing anything until some community focus groups in December. I think there really needs to be a lot more that happens leading up to those in December in addition to the bond work. Like I said, I think, I just, it just, it's not compelling to me that the community could not handle both of those things at the same time.
I have to agree. I feel like if we wait, there may have less time to find a superintendent, not, I know we're a destination district, but I feel like giving people the option and the longevity of having them to start is a really great selling point, and I think we need to start, I think if we tell the community we're going to wait until December, we're going to get some pushback, and so I have to agree with what Dave said.
We could talk to Dave about just moving that whole focus group process up and stretching it out so people know that we have our feet in the water, but keep in mind too, asking a superintendent to leave their district in November, we're putting our district in a horrible position.
Well, that's why we said, we are, we understand it might need to be a flexible timeline.
Right.
So like, we have that person committed by January 1st, but maybe they don't start until July 1st. I just, I don't like the language and the perception that we're just bottom line, not even considering someone starting until July 1st.
I have, I agree with Maggie and Mallory, I think the fall's already moving forward, and we've known about that, we have to put a new superintendent in place as of, you know, March 30th of this year, so it's eight months, it's been three months into the process, and I just feel like, I mean, we already got the momentum, the timeline, I think I was surprised to see the short timeline, but I was pleasantly pleased, like, let's, you know, get it going, but I thought we had talked about, you know, extending it out, but at the same time, I think everybody's kind of, you know, the vows rolling forward already, I think we're, you know, we're already in the process of it, and I, and Jade, or not Jade, David was really confident, right, that they can do it, and other schools are going to be in the same process that we're in, we have an interim, right, so they're going to have to have an interim, and I don't think there's any good start, starting or stopping point, letting the school district know when you're leaving or when, you know, that they're going to be moving on, you know, to.
I feel like it might be more respectful to the next school district that we hired a superintendent from, then they know in January that they will need to look for someone in the fall. But I'm also good about extending the community portion and just kind of extending the process, I don't know how that works, or how Dave would feel about that. Have the community forums in the fall, maybe take a break for holidays, the election, and then start interviews, a longer open process.
I mean, yeah, there's some things on here, like, he only has September 1st through September 10th for input gathered via the website, I don't think that's long enough. We have a ton of people that are going to want to fill out that survey, I don't, I think that could be extended, that could be up longer on the website, we could do more than two days of focus groups, I just think there are ways to, if you want to extend it, if you want to stretch that timeline, okay, fine, but we need to still be actively doing other things towards that end in the meanwhile.
I don't disagree with that either, the one sells, and I, I mean, again, I defer to his experience and the recommendation of things where he said, bond issue, I mean, if this were to not pass for any reason, that's a big, big thing for the district, obviously, and so his, I mean, as soon as he heard about that, he said, oh, we should punt this and we should not even consider, you've got so much time in the winter and the spring to do this, just like every, like the normal kind of process. I feel the same way, it feels like a long period of doing nothingness, and I agree for them, I mean, we'll ask the whole community on large to weigh in via the website, which is not a big ask, I mean, I think he said that was a couple minutes' worth of time, essentially, you know, minimum to put in for that, and then we're talking about a couple of hundred people or something, maybe from our community, between all these different focus groups to come in and give some time. So I agree, and that was my misreaction too, I didn't feel like our community was unable to do both.
I feel the same way.
But again, I defer to what you have mentioned too, I don't know if there is a hybrid where we can still deduce some of the legwork, and I kind of asked about this too, saying, can we just do the surveys beforehand, can we do the focus groups in September, October, you know, before, you know, the election is really at our doorstep anyway, and then just sit on that information for a month or two or whatever, and then start the interviews in January or something? So, I don't know.
Maybe we could go back and ask him for some input on trying to do sort of more of like a hybrid, where we do involve the community a bit more and start that process in the fall so that we have time to look at what comes in and to digest that information, and then, you know, and then look at, because one of the things that I thought was actually great that he mentioned about putting up the posting, I think it was in December, is that that's a great time for people to then go, all right, I've got time with my family, I can go home and talk to them while, we'll go over Christmas break, and go, what do you think about, you know, moving to Grand Rapids? You know, they're not trying to do that, they can have those discussions when they have a little bit of downtime to think about it, rather than, you know, trying to squeeze that into their time, like, I think if we can stretch it out a little bit and go, all right, what ways can we engage our community in the fall to get this information while still making sure that we have enough focus to be able to focus on the bond as well, and then have that hiring, maybe like, keep that part over like the Christmas break kind of thing.
I like having time to mull over what the community comments are.
Yeah.
Like, I really wanted, and I was a little worried about the short, the tight timeline, trying to turn it around and get a description ready, but I would love to have us discuss what the community wants, to really get an idea of what that description should be.
Why don't, why don't we try and then get back with Dave Phillips and just provide this feedback to him and say, hey, we talked to board members, this is what everybody's thinking, we don't necessarily want to have such a compressed timeline, I know that's probably typically what they do, they do this professionally, but they, they know how to do things in a way that we don't do, as professionals don't know, but perhaps we can go back to him and just sort of explain our thoughts and our concerns and the way that we would really like to engage the community and make sure that they have robust opportunities, they have their opinions heard, and we have time to take it all in and look at it all and formulate what really would be the perfect job description for when that goes out.
And if we wanted to ask them, we have a meeting July 12th, would it be a benefit to have them available to all of us to ask some of these specific questions? Would you guys like that?
Yes.
So let's see if you can come back up for safety interest this week, so.
Yeah, and I guess it depends on what his response to this is, I guess, are we, so are we in general coalescing around the idea of community inputs in the fall, in the September, October range, obviously not having interviews and doing any of that stuff during November when all the other stuff is going on, but essentially doing the community piece, taking a breeder for those six weeks or something while we finalize for the bond when we have the election and all that, and then we take shape of what this looks like and post it in December, is that in like our theoretical timeline?
Perhaps, you know, we can check with him and see if that.
Because the focus groups were in September, right?
Yeah.
And the surveys, so October is really a good question for your election.
Right.
Why just there?
I would say, and this will allow us, based on this, the survey and the focus groups are all right at the very beginning of September, when people are still just getting back into school and it's hard, we could move that to a little bit later when people have their routines established, perhaps.
Yeah.
All right, so we could ask if you can come back and talk to some more.
Okay. Do something totally not kosher, superintendent, just thinking about a bond issue in this, do your thoughts, I mean, from the administrative perspective, we're trying to think about the benefit of the community and the whole group, but you have a little experience in this, can you share some thoughts with us about timing?
I, I think you can certainly do both. I think the community is going to be focused on making sure there's long-term leadership in place, I think that's going to be their number one focus area. I think the bond piece, the important element there is that the district's providing good detailed information that people can review and understand what's going to be happening to schools that they know and send their kids to and the like, and understanding all that work, but I think both can certainly happen simultaneously. I think, you know, from other school district's standpoint, sometimes bond issues are these gigantic experiences that happen once in several decades, that's not the case in our community and our district in that regard. We've been out there with a pace of every five to seven years or so, we have a huge advantage as a school district with bonding compared to most other school districts in the state, and so we're, I think our community understands that, and we're smart to take advantage of that advantage. So I think you can certainly do both, but I think you have to have a timeframe that for all those pieces, that's something that is, you represent the community that's going to be workable, or you, you know, ample enough time for people to weigh in in all those pieces.
I just think it's too, it's important, we keep saying, like, the community, the getting back to school, the schedules, I mean, like, yeah, that's true, but, but when you could ask in a focus group, you could ask in a focus group for one hour of your life during the fall, it's not like you're asking them to come 10 times over the course of two months, so I just, I would, I would like to maybe limit some of the language of acting like the community's going to be so overwhelmed by this, I just don't think that's true. We might be, but I don't think that they, that the community is, and so I can need to be a little bit more realistic in the language that we're using, because I don't think that people, if they want to participate in this, would find it that laborious, come for one focus group, one time in their life. So I just, I just want to be careful of that.
All right, so we told them some people like to come back, we did tell us that they seem to be in demand, you know, when they're doing Bluefield, and he wanted us to try to commit to a schedule, so they had those spaces saved for us, so let me talk to him and I'll let you all know. Good?
Good. And then Holly, you said that there was something you wanted to bring up in this section?
Yes.
And I'm probably just going to read it, and then we can, they want to open up for discussion, that's, that's fine. I just want to say, Madam President, members of the board, I've referred this statement, which I'd like to be on the record, and enter this record as part of the meeting minutes. As most of you know, a Freedom of Information Act FOIA request was received by Forest Hill Public School regarding the keyword Sarah Schubel. The stack of pages that were released were brought to my attention this week, and as there are many concerns regarding the information contained therein, I just want to draw attention to a key document that was released per FOIA. And before I walk through the document uncovered in FOIA, I wish to state a bylaw in regards to our committee meetings and how we must hold them in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. The policy states that any committee that is authorized to deliberate, narrow options, eliminate options, or otherwise make decisions on the board's behalf must conduct its meetings and compliance with the Open Meeting Act Policy 2501 and applicable Policy 2501A, including notice requirements, recording minutes, and allowing for public participation. I know that we are all notified by phone calls on Thursday, June 1st, and Friday, June 2nd, as to the results of the subcommittee's findings. I personally was surprised to hear that a decision had been made for us. I expressed my concerns about this decision and was advised that the candidates eliminated themselves due to the nature of our requirements and our timeline or whatever other reasons that they had given. Only one candidate to choose from was presented to us. I inquired if there were more so we could vote on, which I wanted to have at least two or three, that we could pursue. I was told that the list was limited and there were no more. On the night of June 5th, I attempted to further understand how the committee found its candidates and narrowed the list and eliminated options. I was voted, I was outvoted by the rest of the board members and my concerns were dismissed. Yet, with this FOIA request that is now published, it appears that the committee narrowed down some 60 potential candidates and presented the board and the public with just one name, one from 60. We were told there were six. One name came out of six, however, it was not, not one name from six candidates, it's a name from 60 candidates, and I know that two of the candidates on that list were not even on the list, so I'm guessing it's over 60. In fact, on June 5th, at the special meeting, board members stated on behalf of the subcommittee that they processed a pretty significant list and found six people. So I now ask where the meeting minutes are that outline how this narrowing of the process of the candidate options took place as per our bylaw 2505, Section 2B. I also further expressed my concern about this during the next meeting that we had and requested from the subcommittee, the meeting minutes in the list of the six candidates. I was told they'd be happy to share them with me. I then sent out an email as a reminder to have the information sent to me. Monday this week, I received a phone call telling me there were no minutes, and then I was able to hear who the six candidates were. There are no minutes, there's no public notices, there was not anything allowing public participation in the subcommittee meetings and decisions, yet the subcommittee took 60 names and narrowed them down to one. I'm concerned the public would like to know as well. And I believe. And I believe that there's violations of the OMA occurred that, that evening as well as other months preceding. So there's several, I think, open meeting violations. I am gravely concerned about the actions the board has taken since to fulfill the interim superintendent role and the actions we have taken against the very people we work for. I believe this board and our subcommittee may have violated Open Meetings Act. And if a complaint is filed against us, that our actions would be overturned. Not to mention the penalties that are associated with violating the Open Meetings Act. I think part of this too is, I understand we, this board, the subcommittee was put together as advisory committee, not a decision-making committee. So I guess my question is of the sixty candidates, how did we call all of them?
So Holly, you guys moved for an hour yesterday. I explained the first person I called, I got this number, just disconnected. The second person I called last, and so I don't even know why their name's on that list. One of the other people on the list is Dr. Washburn, who's been trying to retire for years, and when they called through that as well. So that's when we said, I don't have the physical energy or time to call sixty people, whom we have about a month to get interim. So we called Dr. Washburn, who's consulted with sixties or so, um, different districts in the state of Michigan. Dr. Corpek, who knows Forest Hill's culture, and also is a superintendent, makes a lot of, who did some professional learning for us. Dirk Wildrider, who has served in IBS as fifth interim capacity, and said, here's the list that MASP provided for us. I would tell you, almost everyone in this, I don't even know who else to these people. The other risk that this group I would hope would not be willing to take is Joe Doe says, oh my gosh, I'd love to be your interim. He hasn't worked in the superintendent field in ten years, he just needs to get some food on the table. And now we're stuck with somebody with no background and no way of knowing that they're really going to serve our district correctly. So this board was actually very proud of this group of trying to say, how can we use some resources at our disposal to get the right people off of that list? And yes, there were people not on that list, because as, um, Dave Phillips told us, you're lucky you could find the number you found. Um, North Hughes in the interim process, that board agreed to take an assistant superintendent and appoint him to the interim role. Caledonia did the same thing, as, as Dietrich was appointed to the county's Urisa, they got together, they called Dirk Wildrider and said, can you please come be our interim? That's what happened in Sparta, and I believe that's what happened in Charan, which is an ISD up north. So the interim process is not the same as a traditional process. It is finding a person that will serve in that role by state law until you're able to fill a position permanently. There were no decisions made. As we explained, we were advised over and over and over, if you make these people go through any broken process, they will run. They've already done superintendency, one of our candidates fly outside, while we were talking to them, please tell me I only have to sit, go through some sort of process with the whole board and public. And we all looked at each other and said, I think this meeting fits exactly what we need to do. And he very calmly said, I'll get over myself, I will do it. So if we would have put these people out in the, in the hallway and said, come in and run a time and interview, I think they would have all declined to do it. It is not a traditional process, if you look in bylaws, the word interim is not really in there, the word replace superintendent. So this is sort of a non-traditional process where we all heard from Jay Bennett, this is a line and die. This is a try to encourage them that you'll be a good fit and see if they come in and present as a good fit to the rest of your community. So it's, I, I love that you're looking at our policy and our bylaws, which we followed perfectly, there were no meetings. I called CJ or texted CJ and Kristen and said, this person's available on Tuesday, can we sit down? And I told you, we have three questions, does the timeline work for you? What have you been doing since you were superintendent? Because some of these people have been out for five, six, seven years, and we wanted to make sure they still understood the trends and the climate in the education community right now to be able to jump in into a, you know, place that might have been different than it was three years ago. And, why do you want to do this? Just to make sure it did something resonate with, that they wanted to come here. That's what we passed down to everybody and said, we have six people, two declined immediately, one declined when they found out it was more than a six-month commitment. One took a job somewhere else, we had two left and said, we'd like you to talk to this one, we could have done the other one first. But our gut feel is, people interested in the best of the community is this would be the best fit. If that was not a good fit for us, we had number two, then we would have held it on back to the drawing board. If we didn't have somebody within a week and a half, we were going to be taken over by the ISD. You have to have a superintendent, and that would certainly not bode well for anybody that's going to come and want to interview in our district that we couldn't be organized enough to get a leader in place, you know, for this process. So I hope that makes sense, there, there truly were no meetings, there was text exchange, um, like I ended up saying yesterday, I'm going to let the whole board know. We actually reached out to Dave Phillips in hopes of getting this wisdom before tomorrow's meeting to share how we should handle this calendar, so some people expressed some concerns. And then sent you all an email, you know, so that's the only time this group has met, talking about anything other than, you know, why, why do you want to be our interim? So, and, and I'm happy to have that discourse or discussion with you, and like I said to you yesterday, you sent me an email saying, I need minutes, and I need to know the names. I said, tell me how I can help you, the minutes would be, here are the three questions posed to people that were somewhat interested in the interruption. And I said, is for the names? I have great respect for people, if you, if you needed the names, I said, you're going to have to let me call all six of them and ask them if they mind us releasing the names. We've heard all about confidentiality as it pertains to the actual search process, we don't have any rules for interim. So those people are certainly entitled to establish a confidential expectation as well, we just don't know where this, because it's not written down anywhere. So happy to share anything, happy to do anything, but that's all it is. So no opening exam violations, no minutes to be, like I said, if you want me to type something up and say, here are the three questions, I'd so like me to do that. Minutes are intended for meetings where there's deliberations and potentially ultimately decisions made. And we make no decisions, we said, this person seems like somebody the board should meet, and there was one other person. So.
I would say some of the decisions probably were made, is that, and you just said it, is if we would have asked them to do this, they would have voted. But it's a decision you made not to do it, because you thought that that would be what would happen, that would have been the decision that made. If you came to us and say, what do you want us to do if we do this? This is what, this was potentially what could happen, then the board would have voted on that, correct?
I, I don't know if we vote on whether somebody votes.
I, I guess what I'm saying is they are.
Some kind of sentiment of a situation, you know? And that is what, what the best, but the people have done before is said, that is not how the process works, you know, so it.
Including some of the legal counsel from MASP who we also asked to say, we have this, and I don't know if it would be different in your mind if we would have called ourselves a work group instead of a subcommittee? Because some places term themselves superintendent search work group? And I don't know if that gets us out of the tees and the i's that you're kind of referencing in the policy, because we are a subcommittee as opposed to a workforce or a task force or something else? But, but again, even legal counsel at MASP said, yep, this is how this is done. It is not in public meetings, it's not subject to OMA, it's not that process, it's informal. Now again, you can't hire somebody, you can't offer somebody money as the three of you or as the one of you or whatever your subgroup looks like. But all of the discussions, all of the findings, all of the, all of the bringing somebody for consideration is, is done outside of OMA, was, was their opinion as well?
I guess my, what I'm at, where I'm going for is, there was one candidate presented to us, one. It was, it, that's, that's a slated decision.
There were two.
If you didn't like that person, you could have gone against that.
Right, the problem is, is that we, we should have had the option to look at both of them and make a decision. And we were not able to make that decision, one got presented, we never even got to the next one, and then it got, it literally just got pushed through. So I think that's where I'm at, is that I feel like we, there was at some point, I think there was some options that were eliminated. That's where I think that the violation, I, I believe a violation is. So what I would like to propose, I would love to see a motion, honestly, to have our, uh, I would like to see our lawyers, our attorneys to look at this and review it and to make sure we're not in violation of Open Meetings Act. And on several different points, there were a couple other things that happened the last two months in, in our meetings during the time on, uh, June 5th. That were there different things that were definitely in question, that I think we violated Open Meetings Act. But I think if, if we're, I would like to see counsel, you know, just to see that we, we, we take care of the abundance of caution that, that we need to do. But I, I, I still feel like the, the process was eliminated. You, you presented one, now there's two, which I know there was, because I got sent two different things, but we never even got to the second person, and I wanted to know why.
Well, what would, what would, what would have happened, what would have been our position, then hypothetical, if we said we'd like both the two of you to come to our open meeting, that ended up going four or five hours, like you sit there the whole time, we'd like to interview you specifically. Wayne LaMalle will have to come in, and then Dr. Schubel and possibly the other candidate just said, nope, that's not what I, that's not what I signed up for. That's not how this interim process works, and I've done this for thirty years, so I kind of know how this works. So you can go find somebody else, that would have nobody. Uh, that's the risk that we would pull, we run by saying, we're going to put you through this very, very formal process to come and, and you, again, you just received so much counsel, that that's not the way that you find somebody, you bring somebody in, you see if they're a good fit. If there are overt objections and we all agree that never mind, we're going to look somewhere else, then we go to the next person, and then we go to the next person. But that just doesn't happen the same way as a formal interview, because then where would we be if they both decided that they didn't even want to take part of that was going to be our process?
You had a list of sixty candidates, so you could, and that's what would have happened, right?
Well, fifty, four of them have no idea who Forest Hill even is and what, I mean, exactly what you would want to bring in. Somebody who has never been over here, who none of our trusted contacts have any awareness of or any knowledge of, I mean, those people you're all.
Yeah, that would be, but that would be a really steep line here, if you just called somebody randomly off the list of, and we're not even sure how MASP puts this list together, because some people didn't even know they were on the list, or that. I think it's just a list that they perhaps.
I think it was retired.
Oh, retired superintendent, so we retirees, they put them on the list.
Right.
And you'd be calling somebody who, I mean, I saw, and, I mean, some of these people were in Florida, some of them weren't. But they had a, like, there, these people were all over the place, and you call.
Fifty, fifty-four of them were in Michigan, and then the rest of the remaining were in Wisconsin and Florida.
No.
Oh, I don't think so. Four, five of them did six, one, six area codes, which like I said, that's a random way to determine if they're local, but it was the best we had. But yeah, there were area codes all over the planet, right?
Well, I looked at their addresses, where they, that's what I, and they were all, fifty-four of them were in Michigan. So I guess my question is, is that, through the process of this, I, I think, I, I'm just wondering why, I mean, I know you're going to, you could explain it in this way, it's just, it's not computer in the fact that I still feel like we eliminated and narrowed the process down for us without, without deliberation, you know, what, is violation of Open Meetings Act?
Again, you can feel, I think, how you feel about it, and that's okay. Uh, I mean, again, I, I, our goal, I think, as the three of us, was to try to provide as much information as possible in, and in the steps that we were, we had multiple, again, sometimes even informal, you know, phone calls just to say, this is what's coming, this is information that we've learned, just so everyone is aware. Can't change the way that you feel about the process, I guess, but I, I think your feeling about it doesn't mean that it's a violation of Open Meetings Act, because you know so good about it.
Well, and, and we did check.
And we had legal opinion, again, and said that was not the case.
Did you check with our attorneys?
Check with MASP's attorney.
MASP's attorney, but they're, but they're not our attorneys.
Sure, you're right.
You know, I mean, when.
We, we, we paid them.
They are attorneys.
So this list, we had a meeting on April 17th, and Jay Bennett came in. And that evening, we put the subcommittee together, and I know we had some phone calls back and forth of who would be on the potential subcommittee. On April 20th, that list was released. You had on April 20th. So you're talking six to seven weeks later, we, we've got this funnel that's narrowed down to one candidate for us that was presented before us. And there's, and then it was like this rush, so I know you said what we were supposed to do with the meeting and ask them to be there. We had plenty of time. In six, seven weeks was plenty of time to actually hold additional meetings during that process, and we did not do that. It felt very rushed, we're getting a phone, we, he knew who the candidate was, right? Dan didn't know who the candidate was. That's part of the FOIA request, there's an email that, that got released that he was, was excited and at the risk of, you know, overstepping my boundaries, here, here's where, where I'm presenting it. So it, uh, I, I, I would love to motion to request our legal counsel to look over all of this, just to ensure that we're not in violation. If not, if that, if the violation gets filed, then then we're going to face, then you face the consequences of that of the Open Meetings Act. And if there is any violations in there, I mean, that's, that's, I mean, that's a gamble that if you're willing to take, but I would like to motion that we, and I can put it out of motion.
We already have legal opinion that that's not true.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, again, I know it's your opinion that maybe we did, but we have legal opinion with people that we pay any members of who work for us that have said, this is how everyone everywhere does this, and this is already been adjudicated essentially, and it's not fine. Because always doesn't apply to the subgroup.
I mean, not that it probably makes you feel any better, but like, I, I think you're probably also thinking of like, well, our finance committee, our curriculum committee, they have open meetings and things like that. Technically, because decisions aren't made during those meetings and it's a subgroup, technically those meetings aren't required to follow OMA rules. But we do anyway, we go above and beyond what is required.
Sure, yes, because.
It's not because decisions aren't made in those meetings.
Right, but you also are doing minutes and you are having the public.
Which is going to be in response, it, we didn't have to be that.
Beyond what we actually have to do according to OMA rules. We go above and beyond for those committee meetings. So you don't feel like you eliminated a process or channeled anything or made decisions for this, for us, based on that? I guess I, I'd like to hear from Pinky and Mallory, so did you guys know there was a list of sixty candidates that were in this?
I voted on a person that I wanted to see, because she is a great candidate. So I voted yes on Sarah Schubel, because she will be able to lead our district, she knows our district, she had great recommendations from the, from the, what I went out first time and got recommendations. So I think that we need, we need somebody, and I'm glad they brought us a viable candidate that will lead us for the next year. But that's my feeling.
I was told yes, there was a, a list of about sixty people, and that, um, some of them were completely unknown to trusted contacts. Some of them, that Marion said, showed no interest, um, didn't know that their name was even on the list. And then, so that knowledge in combination with what Jay Bennett told us when we met first time with him, that the interim process was very informal. It was very much like, you need to find someone that is willing to do this, there are no formal interviews. Get somebody in here to fill that place for as long as we need them to, maybe six months, maybe a year, and maybe pushing it. So I was operating under the assumption the entire time, based on what he told us, that this would look incredibly different than the actual hire of a superintendent. And that it would be down to maybe just a couple of names of people who were willing to do this, because it was such a temporary thing in the midst of their retirement, you weren't going to get someone who wanted to move here for this, or someone who wanted to uproot their entire lives to do this. It was mostly people who were interested in helping out the district. So I walked away from that meeting with Jay with the understanding that this would not be reflective at all of the true hiring process of, of the actual superintendent, that it would look very different.
Right, and I guess what I'm looking at is, I'm not looking at, uh, being hired. That's, that's not what I'm, I'm, what I'm talking about, it's the process that we got to who we hired.
Right, I felt like what Jay described to us, and then how this panned out, were the same. I felt like how this worked, how they presented, how the subcommittee presented information to us, how we were able to ask their questions. It was what Jay told us was going to happen, and how it did happen in other districts.
Again, like Dave said, quote unquote, fortunately you get several people to look at, that's not always the case. It is a completely different board than hiring a superintendent. And the four local districts we've been able to talk to, all talked to one person and hired them. It's not the same thing as hiring a superintendent.
Right, but when I asked, when the six candidates that you guys were bringing down, why these people couldn't do it, and bundling down to the one, I asked if there was any additional people out there, and we were told, no, that you never even made the phone calls on the list. We called all sixty people.
No, Holly, I was, I was.
Do you want us to call a person in a random place who has no, is that what we would want?
Well, what I'm saying is, is that you, you, you presented one candidate, it was a yes or no vote based on one candidate. That, that was a slated decision that was presented to us as the board.
We said, here's a candidate, if this candidate does not agree with you, we have resumes and another one, so board vote, would you like to continue with the other candidate? Or would you like to appoint this one or hire her? So the idea was, know that there's somebody else out there and we can go back to the drawing board, but chances are good we will not get somebody by July first.
And I was kind of voting yes, because I know who she is, I know people who live in that district. I know people who teach in that district, who are administrators in that district, and they had nothing but unbelievable things to say about her as a leader, as a person, as a parent, um, as an educator. And so I did not feel any reservations in saying yes, because I knew it was, it's temporary, she's not going to leave permanently. And even if she was, I, I still vote yes, if that's all we had to pick from. I didn't know who the other person was, so because this process is not the same as an official interview like a regular superintendent, I didn't feel a need to meet the other person, because I knew that this one would get the job done and, and get them well. Based on her resume.
Yeah, I'm not denying the, the validity of the person and, and what her resume states that she's, that's not it, it's the process that led up to it. That's, that's, that's what I'm drawing attention to right now.
I think I would agree with you if it was the full superintendent search. But because this is what MASP has already told us is the process for hiring an interim. It was in line with everything we had heard, that this is how it works.
But we also asked Jay during that process, would we, as the subcommittee, make decisions for the board? And he said, no, that it has to be presented, decision, and I, and I, you're going to just keep saying the process of elimination of the other candidates, and Sarah showed up, but.
What's the line between a decision that the subcommittee makes as part of their work, what, what they're asked to do, and a, a decision that you think is supposed to come back to all, how do we? a, a, a decision that you think is supposed to come back to all, how do we, how do we decide who we even call? How do we decide what, hey, I made phone call? I mean, there's, decisions is kind of a logic, it, it's kind of a, a very broad term, right?
We did make a decision at the open meeting, we decided yes. We voted on it and it was a decision, a yes on this person.
Right, but it was the only person presented.
Well, we could have said.
You could have said no.
If, if, because, yeah.
And so I, I guess the, yeah.
Well, I, 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 I hear your concerns, I think we've addressed them as best we can in terms of, we followed the process that M A S B said, this is how you find an interim. And we made sure we checked with legal counsel at M A S B and they lined up and said, yes, this is the way to do it. So I, I feel badly that you don't agree with that, but we're, I think we need to move forward with the fact that we feel comfortable that we did follow those rules and we did things the way that they are needing to be handled typically handled in terms of finding an interim superintendent. Um, I wish there was something that we could do to make you feel better about that, but I think at this point, we maybe just need to have, you know, there, agree to disagree.
There's gonna be an open meetings violation filed on this, so I'll just tell you that that's where the public's going with that, so.
Is it, do you nervous about that?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned, so.
Holly, you did indicate you were making a motion, do we, are you formally making that motion so that we, as a board, need to vote on that?
Yeah, I would like to, sure.
All right, what is your formal motion?
I would motion to request that legal counsel to review all notices, notes, meeting minutes and other items pertaining to the subcommittee meetings, special meetings and the board meetings surrounding the superintendent and interim superintendent search and provide a report ensuring that this board has not violated the Michigan Open Meetings Act.
Okay, motion's on the floor, is there a second? Without a second, the motion does not move forward. All right, we are done now, I think, with the superintendent search. Um, Elizabeth, if you wouldn't mind grabbing the cards, we will move on to board communications. Okay. No, any board communications?
Wait. Sorry, yes, um. As we look at our bond issue, I'm hoping to use a discussion at some point about bond language. I, like Dan said, five to seven years, we've had a couple of these in his tenure, we're looking up to twenty thirty-one and we're talking about the strategic plan and that might put us in a position that we have opportunities for new facilities. And I know that that bond language is kind of goofy, I mean, the idea of saying, keeping us open if there's a need for new construction. Do you know how we ran into that before? So can we at least know that at some point before that language is finalized, talk through the ramifications of putting it in, not putting in, how to put it in?
Yeah, I, I think that's fair, yeah, the bond language is very particular and what goes out of notice and what the ideas are that we want to have move forward in the district, so I think that it should be.
Is that reasonable?
Yeah, and I think that's what's planned for discussion, July twelfth is the next meeting and architects and construction manager will be here. So that's an opportunity to make sure that whatever the final battle language becomes, which doesn't need to be settled on July twelfth, uh, can reflect what it is that, uh, is, is the intent and then, uh, also providing flexibility, since we can't predict the future, we don't know what our needs gonna be in twenty twenty-eight, uh, so that that language can be flexible. Allow us to, uh, execute on whatever future needs may occur. Go ahead.
Go. Okay. Any other board communications?
I'll just say the musical's happening today, tomorrow, on Friday, if anyone's free and wants to come, there are kids from all three schools, they put it together, I think in like twelve rehearsal days, you know, this summer, like they usually do, so. If you're looking for something to do.
Are you at the pit again?
There is no pit, actually.
There's no pit?
No, um, but my daughter isn't, so we'll be there.
Well, that is, that's awesome.
Okay.
Yeah.
Apparently, I'm not glad of the part, I was over there the other day and Jeremy said, Mr. Howardson went home, put the day off because they were so out of schedule.
Wow.
So he's far more, I guess, because he's quite sick for three years.
He is.
So we go.
Yep.
Any other communications?
Well, in a little one, and it was your last meeting and you know, I thought it was last week, it's crazy, and I just dug up a few things. I think it's some of the fun memories that, um, Dan's first day here, first week here, Inver Vista was under construction. We had asbestos in the ceiling, we had guys throwing around tools on top of the glass, a atrium roof in the ceiling, and I said, you need to get on top of this quick. Um, your plans are gonna be worked up, we're gonna go to this meeting, I, what did you say, there were two hundred people in that room? It was packed, and Linda Vanderjeck, who was Scott's predecessor's predecessor's predecessor, and I sat in the back and I gave him two or three things to say and Dan said, hey, I'm just here to learn, and that crowd looked huge, shreds. And Dan called me the next day, he said, what was that? And I said, well, I can say this because I am welcome to Inver Vista, um, and I tried to help you out and I will never forget this, he said, I'm a transparent classroom of government instructor and I'm all about modesty and openness both ways. And I'm like, well, I feel really stupid now, and it's very cool that you led that way the whole time. You have made this such a, um, satisfying job and always trying to help us lead with truth and all that kind of stuff. But I, um, and dating through my pile, we all know I have a pile that just kind of amassed over the years, I found a couple of things. And it's funny, because when we hired Dan, um, by conservative standards, he's an old single guy and everybody was like, you know, what's he been doing it is like, and it's kind of cute. Mike Washburn's last, um, update, he said, um, the transition is going very slowly. I think Dan's last day in Carmen Amesworth is the twenty-third, then he'll get married and start a new job, how hard can that be? And then the last forty-two years, um, do you remember your first opening day, you stand in opening day to kind of launch staff, goodwill and all that kind of stuff? And Dan, as we've noticed, is incredibly intelligent, knows how to master technology and all that stuff, and you got on the stage at the Fine Art Center in front of probably a thousand people and the tech didn't work, and just watching the four men's body motions, it was just her fault. And, and as a part, I wanted to add to this, if you're really gonna be a gifted speaker, so have fun with it, just don't be you, what's in you coming out is really valuable to us. So it wasn't the next year, but it wasn't sooner after, you wanna relate to your people. And he got up there and here's this audience is full of people, and he said, look, I understand that education is a big deal, I understand what life is, it's the most prized possession in the world. Please keep in mind, I have two toddlers and my wife's money combined age is over a hundred. Oh my gosh, the place burst into laughter, so that was kind of fun too, and now they are middle school and almost middle school, you know, at a good age, so it's been very fun having them part of the team. But I'll close with one fun thing, um, you know, got to work under two superintendents, styles were very different, Sarah's at Care for Forest Hills. But, um, Lord Ben then said, are we in a good place? He's saying, I'm gonna be your guy, help, 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 are we cool? And he said, when I met the board's search committee, this is from Mike Washburn, I saw firsthand the wow factor after they had met Dan. I've now met both candidates, in my mind, one of them's head and shoulders above the other, not because of ability, because of the big picture over time. Here's what I think from the thirty thousand feet level, Dan being as a future superstar, this may be the only time in our near history to create a seamless leadership model. While there's no guarantee that Dan will match my length of service, he did, he possesses all the characteristics, characteristics to do that and with a deep heart. So that is so fun to open that and know that those words are just as true now and have proven over seventeen years, and you far surpass his tenure because your last three years, I think, are worth at least ten years. So we're so safe to see you go and I'm missing a friend, but I'm excited for what we're gonna do next. So no thinking about school for three months.
All right.
And a beach, have a boy, hang with the cute kids and see what great opportunity awaits you, do good news for people.
All right. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When your name is called, please come up to the microphone, state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board for established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Nick Pro. Who else? Karen one. Mike Royce.
Yeah, Mike Royce, Sixty-Man Aldedale. Uh huh. Um, yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the topic of the interim search. I wasn't in attendance at the big event that's posted on the fifth. Um, fortunately, I can leave, I was maybe before I found the goal. I was definitely shocked that the pace happened very fast. It used to me, I did see kind of follow-ups that the interim search would be so quick and that that happened at that point. One thing I'd like to mention is I've seen in this very room, actually someone talk, I forget who, whether it was Julie, getting votes for a roof for a table, three votes for a roof. So I find it really interesting, it narrowed so quickly, I have one person, I'm very shocked that it happened. Might be the right person, but I don't even know. And hearing some of the members that were talking about the discussion, I'm just concerned about how quickly things happen. In fact, the other part that I wanna mention and comment on is having that, having Sarah in the room, you were talking about her. I've interviewed a few people, I've been a manager in my space and my experience, and I'm actually really shocked to have her in the room openly talking. That's just really surprising as a standard. Um, in the public, frankly, I think the public would wanna know that was the decision that was gonna be processed that day. I think a lot of this comes down to transparency, and I'll end on this, I think what Holly's asking is interesting. If there's nothing to hide, why not just follow up with a simple review of the contents? I really hope she has found her, but not one person in this room supported Holly to check it, but frankly, at the end of that, it answered a couple of things. Number one, wasn't on the, wasn't the right process followed? We talked about transparency. And number two, with framework, what's missing, and I heard Mary talk about that, what's missing, it's not in the handbook or in your, uh, process. They have an interim search process, this would be a bit of a framework, to say, you know what, we did it this way and then step back and say, you know, transparency, so that's my point.
Thank you. Scott, what's up, man?
Hello, Scott, I'm here again to talk about the lack of minutes, so, of course, the folks on the school's website. Additionally, they explained missing meeting, missing meetings, which I'm back to assuming the finance and curriculum meetings didn't take place. And when also I was at the meeting here on June fourteenth, and I spoke about the discrepancy in regards to the approval for chart laws at the May twenty twenty-two meeting. For, uh, yeah. Saying that the manual cost of chart laws is two hundred and three thousand dollars, but in actuality for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, F H P S paid chart laws two point one million and you paid four hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars in management fees alone. You know, in the minutes for that meeting, my comment was relegated to me talking about financial information posted on the district website. I know minutes are not verbatim, but at least stating in that thing what financials I was speaking about were then helpful. Again, I will report back, uh, Resort Bank President Paulson's campaign pledge at the Facebook page. At the basic level, the agenda and meeting minutes distributed before any following board meetings are so minimal that they provide little useful information. I'll improve these so the community is informed of what specifically is on the agenda. And actively encourage parents, youth and community members to provide their opinions with enough time for the board to consider them before important decisions are made. Obviously, that's not like that's happening yet, and you've said this as a trustee, now you're the president, you actually can do things to make that happen. Um, additionally, the lack of financial transparency for this district that you people allow, I think is disgusting. You allow them, the, you know, specifically Julie Davis, to do the bare minimum as required by law. Sunlight is the greatest disinfectant for corruption or mismanagement. Make them put the prior check registers back on the website and mandate that they give you what this district is spending money on every month. You authorize spending millions of dollars every month with no weeks or whatsoever. In fact, you don't even authorize the spending, it's already been spent, you guys just rubber stamped it, just like with hiring the principal. The decision was already made, was just for show, it's already put out on the website, already posted everything, and then you guys just rubber stamped, no, sounds good. So just doing the bare minimum is a joke and you guys, this district should do better and go above and beyond, you know, be more transparent. Show what, like I said, you guys spend millions and millions of dollars every month, more than Ada, Grand Rapids Township, Cassidy authorizes every month. You guys do it in a single week. So, of money that's already been spent, and it's, again, it's not your money, this isn't a Catholic temple, this isn't a Grand Rapids Christian, this is a public school paid for by taxpayers. So please do better, be more transparent, okay? And again, you guys are gonna have to do it, Julie Davis does, and every, all the people that work in this building. It's already documented, it's already on public, uh, you know, PDFs or sales spreadsheets or anything like that, it's not like they're really handwriting these out. It's already there in the computer, very simple to put out, thank you.
Professor Chris.
Good morning, Professor Chris, I need your real court. I'm actually gonna change a little bit what I was gonna talk about because last night, or I got home, I got a FOIA saying, Robert, I know you go to school for a meeting, maybe you should see this. So I received it and I read all the papers on FOIA and then when Holly brought up the idea that it was sixty other candidates. The point of this open meeting act and why I'm up here is, the whole time, I went through all the minutes of the actual board meeting. Every time I was going through, there's only been six people, there's only been seven people came up. We talked to the, two of them left, two of them left, it was never mentioned one time to the public that we had a huge list, whether it is a good list or a bad list. There's sixty people on this list, the whole time of the board meeting, it was only six. I don't think that's right, I don't think that's fair, that's not being transparent, as Holly said, at least you should mention, hey, we've had a list of sixty candidates. We went through them, they're not the right people, we have one individual and this is the individual, it did not come across that way. On top of that, so many times, if you all mentioned, not just the committee, the board approved this, the board approved that. Well, apparently the board did not approve it because Mr. Boar over here is supposed to know, there was other questions were brought up by Mallory, who I thought brought up some good questions of, oh, this is the only one we got. My point is, is that this list and all the little statements that were made in here, you didn't let the public know that the list was only just six. You made every place was only six. That's why I'm up here and that's why I'm reading this out. So with the open meetings act, I think Holly's got a point, I would take it to the attorneys and have a look at it because I believe the public sees the FOIA, which they're not gonna see it from me, but if I'm good, I'm sure a lot of other people have it. It's gonna get out there and I think there's gonna be some questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, this time, public comments are closed, thank you for your input and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all the requested follow-up. What did I mean, closing remarks?
Just a few, uh, you know, in terms of the list, I know the Michigan Association of School Administrators, uh, kept a list a while back and I think that's the list of sixty that people are referring to. That list is really old and it hasn't been updated in many, many years, so even though such a list exists, it's not current. Uh, I wanna say it's several years old, it goes back a couple of executive directors and it's just been a thing that's remained on their website. And there's people on the list who aren't even alive today, so it's not something they've been maintaining. So I, I've been staying out of the search process, I still think that's the appropriate thing to do, but I would just add that little piece. I'm not surprised if you got a hold of such a list, you quickly realized there wasn't much to that list because it's, uh, quite dated and not something that kept up to date, it's probably something they should just pull down altogether and not handle that, just my two cents on that piece with the list. Uh, Sarah Schubel will do a great job, as I've mentioned before, I, I know Sarah well, uh, we both started in West Michigan in two thousand and six. Uh, she in East Grand Rapids and I here, worked together, uh, for her twelve years in East Grand Rapids and, uh, I know her family, I know her husband Greg, uh, was a great principal for us, uh, she'll be great. Uh, it's, it's a wonderful thing that we've been able, uh, to find someone, first of all. Two, to find a qualified experience superintendent, three, to find someone that knows our community and district in, in West Michigan and someone with Dr. Schubel's caliber, I think the community will be, uh, very pleased, uh, once she, uh, gets in the position and we move forward. Just a few, uh, parting closing remarks, uh, just, I always try to remember, uh, we are here for kids and always stay focused on kids and what they need, and C J, I love you, bring up the piece about, uh, summer stock, uh, and the things that are happening there. Because, uh, I know anytime, um, things have gotten, and, and sometimes they can, uh, you know, things can get complex, things can, uh, have many aspects, layers to them. Uh, anytime that's happened, I'll just go back and spend some time with kids and re-ground of why we're here, what our purpose is, and to stay focused on that. So, uh, if ever you're feeling that way, my only advice is go spend some time with kids and, uh, it'll keep us all, uh, our, our mission crystal clear of what it is we need to do going forward. And just last but not least, just thanks to this board, uh, I had a lot of thank yous out there for many folks, but I appreciate you all volunteering. Uh, and remember, these are volunteer positions, uh, to step up and do this work and this warm-up. are volunteer positions, uh, to step up and do this work, and this form of public service that happens in about sixteen thousand school districts across the country, it's, uh, it's a, it's a really wonderful thing, it is a treasure of, uh, our country, and, uh, thanks for signing up to do this work, it makes a huge difference. I will soon move into a one hundred percent parent-only role, and, uh, be one of the constituents, but I'm grateful for people that, uh, volunteered their time to do this work. So, thank you, and I wish you all the best, uh, as we go forward. Those are my closing remarks.
Thank you. My own little closing remark is, thank you right back at, it's, Mary, I already said it very, very well, but thank you very much for your leadership and dedication to this district over the last seventeen years, so you're going to be very big shoes to fill. All right, is there any other district, any other business before the board? Okay, there being no further business, names adjourned.